We'll call our work session in order and I will turn it over to Secretary T. Day. Knock your way back.
All right, well, I'm gonna just kinda introduce three things to you and then maybe let you guys decide what you'd wanna spend some time on or questions you have for us or conversation you wanna have with each other. So as we've approached this kinda cellphone study a little bit, we've worked through the book. We had agreed to read through part through, uh, excuse me, part three tonight. So there's that piece if there's any compelling things you wanna share there. We've obviously uploaded the survey data for you to Board Docs. We hadn't planned on doing a presentation of that tonight primarily because we anticipated probably what time we'd be sitting down here and what people's mental capacity with that would be for that and also understanding that it's pretty easily digestible. I think the nice thing are the themes at the end from the open-ended responses that we were able to put together. I think tells a pretty compelling, you know, story just about where people are at and how they're feeling about things too. That may or may not match with, you know, thoughts you had entering in this conversation. The other thing I told you I would try to come back with and apologies that it's not as cleaned up or as nice as I had hoped to have it for this evening, but this is a survey that I'd asked the U E N to distribute our urban ed network partners about what they're doing with cellphones. You can see my responses on there as well, also trying to signal that we're in the middle of this work and we have varied policies between buildings, even though we probably have a better, more consistent policy at our elementary sites. But you can tell there's some, maybe just as an introduction to that spreadsheet, there's some common themes in there, right? About times that they do try to allow students to use the phones, whether it's passing time or lunchtime, before, after school hours. And then a lot of times you see a progression of consequences, right? And I think that's, that's part of probably what we've seen when you talk, when you talk to districts about these cellphone bans. Then what is that progression of consequences? And so I think for us, it might be good whether we talk about it here tonight or we just think about like, what consequences are we willing to palette for something like that? Because honestly, I think from working in a school and talking to our school administrators and our teachers, we will have to use those consequences, right? Those will likely get employed as we try to implement this. So if there's something we uncomfortable with about a step or a progression of, then we would need to think about that when we actually get to writing our own policy. And then the last thing is an article that one of you had forwarded me really about a Tumla Community School District that when they were one week into their cellphone ban. It said that it was, it caught my attention because it was more restrictive maybe than the other policies and they had pursued things like, I think it references the kids had to have them in their lockers. And I think they're talking about their personal lockers, not necessarily a cellphone locker that would happen at, in each classroom per se. So those are the few things we have prepared for you here tonight. If there's a jumping off point or a starting place you guys wanna take it, you know, please speak up or otherwise maybe could just share your general impressions from what you saw in the survey data if you had time to look.
I just have a really quick question.
Yeah.
Will the survey go to our students and regarding parents?
I think we're due to get that out next week, right?
Yep.
Yeah, so next week we'll open that survey about the same two-week window. We would have it concluded by the end of September, I think is what we're shooting for. And then we'd probably present the results to you at that, our first conversation in October. And then remember, we're still kinda due back with some recommendations by the end of October. No, I'm probably just thinking out loud too much about the end of October.
Just clarification, when the students get the survey, is it just sent to their email? Are teachers reminding them in class, like, hey, I'll give you a couple of minutes to complete the survey? We'll text it to them and tell them to use your cellphone or whatever.
That is a good question. I don't think we had talked about necessarily taking class time away to do it, but if we're looking for completion rates, I mean.
Or even at the end of the class. I mean, one thing that we do like at Iowa, when it's the end of the year and teachers want, instructors want feedback on their courses, last few minutes of one of the last few lectures is like, I'll give you five minutes to complete my survey and tell me how great or awful I was since my school.
You use intervention time.
Yeah, I think we have advisory, homeroom, yeah. We could probably, I mean, I think there's some ways, yeah, we can, we can try to leverage a higher completion rate of that.
Yes.
And I think we had decided K-12 parents is what you guys would like to see, but seven 12 student, or six 12 students?
Yes.
Is that okay that we're still on that same trajectory?
You made sure that parents have like option of clicking, we can delineate.
Like they have multiple kids.
Which ones, no, yeah, or something delineate elementary, you know, high school.
That's where I thought you were going. I, I'll, some of the surveys now that I have a middle schooler and an elementary school, they only let me pick one option. And so maybe if we could just add like a both or.
Well, the other point you.
Or it's a click box so you can click all of the, but somehow that shows you're a parent of multiple.
Children in multiple grade.
In multiple buildings, yeah.
The thing, we might've been talking about Chromebooks, but you'd also mentioned like the, not just elementary on some of these surveys too, right? Like K-2 versus 3-5 might be different for folks depending on the issue, so.
We talked, there might be drastic differences between, between your students' experiences in multiple buildings. So we wanna make sure that you have an opportunity to fill out a survey for every building. So you have the opportunity to select which building you're a parent of. Then you need to submit another one and gives the option to submit.
And then maybe just something in, you know, like, please feel comfortable submitting multiple surveys if you are at multiple. Because I, I never wanna submit it twice because I don't, I just don't know if I'm allowed to or not, but maybe.
But you're saying you guys have already worked on having it so you can select multiple kids, right? Yes, okay.
No, not in one.
And then it prompts you at the end as well, like if you have a student in another, like elementary, secondary, or whatever, you can click right there to take it again.
Perfect, yeah. Yeah, that would be great.
I'll give a initial blush on the survey results so far is there's a bit of disconnect between the administration and the staff. But I think that speaks to the point that I think Director Abraham made sure to articulate the last time was, it can't be staff's responsibility to do it all. And I think they're feeling some of that, so I think that's reflected in the response to a degree. The other thing I did find interesting was the staff over administration also had higher numbers of positive aspects to phones. So it was a bigger problem, but also had more positives, which I thought was an interesting dichotomy, but that's, that did stand out to me. But I do think that discrepancy probably is, it's, well, it's all perspective of who's trying to implement the policy as it is. And so I think that goes to, I think the open-ended questions from both sides is something we all share is that we need something more global, right? That's just, that implemented the same way everywhere so that you're not getting those discrepancies.
The teacher in admin survey was K-12.
So that, that point about it being good and bad, that, you know, that is, that's with any tool, right? Like it's, it's how you use it. And so that's why I really like the point about how they, they put a lot of importance on this digital citizenship class. Because I think that, you know, again, cellphone is tool, it's neither good nor bad. It is how we relate to it and how we learn to use it. And if we teach our, our students and ourselves really to use it in a positive way, that's gonna help them life, lifelong. So I really like seeing that suggestion and I wonder if that's something that we can incorporate into our sixth-grade curriculum, actually. I think, you know, the points about it being consistent and backed up by administration, that's, that is key. Consequences, I'll just go right there. I would hate for consequences of this initiative, which we're trying to get students to pay attention in class, for it to be removal from class. I think that defeats the purpose of what we're trying to do. And then, you know, seeing the overwhelming response of what the teachers are saying about how this interferes with their teaching, I guess I would really rather us roll it out as soon as possible. I don't see why we would wait 11 months to, to roll it out if it is as big of a problem as our teachers are saying that it is.
Yeah, I agree with that last point, Jane. Like I think as soon as we can get it rolled out, I mean, that's like, if we decide on something and we decide it's a good policy, it makes no sense to me to like wave on something good just because it's August 23rd or, or whatever.
Right, and there's all kinds of reasons why now might be better than starting at the start of the school year, you know? Because now teachers know the students, they have some relationship, they can talk about the why that we're doing this. So I mean, you know, so I, I think you can, yeah, find all kinds of reasons to start it whenever. So I agree, we should go ahead as soon as we find something, knowing that we might have to go back in and say, maybe we need to do this.
Yeah, and then circling back to the discipline point, I, I agree that, and we all know that when kids are outside of the classroom, like they are not learning and that's bad for them. But I think that our policy, especially with how wired these kids are with the phones, and this is just me, is gonna have to have some teeth to it. And I do expect it to be enforced. And if we see consequences such as, you know, in-school suspension, out-of schools, or whatever, I'm not going to be too concerned at first. And what rings in my mind, I still remember Kim Fitton this year, or last year now, at Northwest, came up with the policy, like, you don't record fights, right? And I don't know if you guys, but like you cannot, you cannot record fights at school on your phone. And if you do, you're getting out-of-school suspension.
TMZers.
TMZ, yes. And, and, and what, and what happened? The first fight got recorded, got TMZ, and that kid got punished. And then the whole school knew, oh, wow, they are actually serious about enforcing this policy. And then no more TMZers at Northwest is, is my understanding. And so I wouldn't be concerned if we saw a slight uptick in our disciplinary process as a result of the cellphones. What I'd be more concerned about is that if it didn't drop down and that it was, it was long-term sustained suspensions. But if it's a, if, if we monitor it, so for three months or six months, I, I don't even think it would take, again, it took Northwest kids one time to figure it out. But that initial blip won't bother me too much. It's gonna be then looking at the long-term ramifications, like are, are these policies consistently and persistently keeping kids out of classroom? If so, that's a negative impact that we are really gonna have to discuss.
That's, and one of these you all have talked about already is not, trying not to put the impetus on teachers and then also what are the consequences going to be? How we sort through that and balance that is going to shift that one way or the other. Because if it is, we don't want kids out of class, we really are gonna put more of that on the teachers because they're gonna have to figure out ways to enforce that in the classroom. Or it's gonna have to be as, at least to say, you know, so consistently done that the teachers feel they have that backing from their, from their administration, right? But if the, if the guidance is, we're not gonna remove kids from class, I don't wanna speak for Brady, but some teachers will like, will see that as, we're putting the teacher on an island to, to solve the problem inside the classroom if the child is allowed to have it on their person during the day. So I think it's a great conversation to have because we are really hard to work with the nuances in how we balance that out to make teachers feel supported, but also ensure that it's enforced consistently across classrooms throughout the entire building.
Just have more question for board members. What policy do you want to see here? What, is it the bags? Is it the checking in with teacher, if they're in class? Because it sounds like everybody wants something done, but. Or do we send it to them and say, what is your idea?
I mean, bags, that then who keeps?
Those like magnet bags, yeah.
I know, cellphone bags that the student keep on their persons. I mean, my, my, the reason why I'm asking, I don't envision putting staff in a situation where now they're sort of responsible for all these cellphones for its main office classrooms. But I also don't like the idea of students putting a hundred-dollar, thousand-dollar phone in a locker and leaving it unattended. I, I mean, some districts have that policy of, if you have a cellphone with you, it's not out. I mean, you, are, are we saying we don't trust kids? So if we tell them, there's no cellphones out during, and we have to decide class time, passing? I mean, we have to decide if we're talking total ban, so I.
I mean, our policy already is that you can't have your class.
Yeah, but, right, but I, I think goes back to the reinforcement of this is a district-wide policy. How will, I mean, that's a good question, but Mitch, and I, and you're right, we want different things because I don't know how I feel about the bags or lockers or, especially it's money. We don't have those things just laying around.
I think to answer your question, that where my head is at, is a bell-to-bell ban. And, and done without a locker, without a bag, just, cellphones are not allowed to be visible bell-to-bell. And, and the reason that I like that is it's the easiest to enforce, right? Like you don't have, is it study hall? Is it passing period? Is it lunch? Like what is, like, they're just, you don't see the cellphone. And it's on, and, and I told one mom, I said, look, John Bacon isn't gonna be standing at the front door of City High checking everyone's bags, right? Like that's, that's not happening. So all these parents who are like, oh, my kid is so responsible with their phone, they never use it. They just need to have it in their bag just in case. Well, guess what? If you don't bring it out in the school day, bell-to-bell, no one's gonna know that you have it and you're not gonna get in trouble. So if, if, if that's your kid, like, no one's gonna know. That, but if your kid is bringing out the phone, then that ends the discretion of, is this an acceptable phone use? It's just, oh, did the bell ring? Has it dismissed? No, you've now violated the policy. And then you get switched to enforcement. And then that avoids us spending money on the hardware such as lockers and bags or whatever. And then in my head, I also seem to think we go, I, I, I have concerns about easing into something. I think we just, to me, again, it's just clean, it's black and white, that's it. And then we study it and we see what the consequence, like how it plays out and what are the consequences, unintended and intended. And then we remain committed to modifying it if we need to. But that's, that's kind of, after all this reading and stuff is where my head is currently at.
So you mean first bell in the morning, last bell in the afternoon?
Yes, yeah. Eight to three or whatever, nine to four, wherever school.
That's, that's, that's what I like as well. I already heard from students, oh, we already know how to break open those. Yeah, we already know how to, yeah. I agree with you, putting in the bags or putting in their locker, I don't think either.
It's just like from first bell to, you know, no locker, no cellphone.
I wonder if part of discipline can involve parents, you know, like I can remember just that we would say, you don't get this back till the parent comes in together. And, you know, that was a big deal. And then the parents are kinda like that and they don't want the kid to do it again. And I mean, that might be a step in there somewhere. I mean, I, I think, I'm, rather than about suspension, I mean, years ago, we used to suspend kids from missing school. You know, so I mean.
Yes.
Yeah, we did, we did.
Now we found out today that we have out-of-school suspension.
Right.
But, but it might take just a few, although some kids might not care, but it's been, you know, maybe junior high kids care more than most of the kids.
Is it possible for the school to take, to have the kids a regular phone company come to school? So that they cannot have a home possession in a bag or not, as long as they're inside.
Well, like five kids, yes.
I'm sorry?
Like five kids, yes. Seventeen hundred kids is a different challenge, right? Like there's probably some students where there's, for, there's a reason they may have to do that already, right? But.
So long as the example we were talking about.
Well, this one, I mean, this, a Tumla article is talking about them putting them in their lockers. I mean, I'm, Chase and I were sidebar-ing here about, there might be some more context we also need to give to our principals. I mean, I do wanna stand up for him a little bit that, yes, this gets in the way of teachers' instruction, but their frustrations are also gonna be inconsistent expectations from teachers that they've tried to roll out a policy and the teachers don't communicate it and don't follow through on it. And then they get frustrated and mad. And the teachers would complain about the principal saying they don't come and do anything then when I call, right? So we have frustrations on both sides and it's a people issue about how we do it. The, just talking about it, and I mean, again, I'm, I'm not sold on what the right answer is here. I think I'm warming up to the idea more about like not maybe a cellphone locker in every room or a yonder case for every kid. But I also think about trying to manage a no-cellphone environment from eight to three, just with the phone in the kid's pocket and expect them to do that. That's a nightmare scenario for our large high schools. I mean, they're gonna find nooks, crannies, bathrooms, all over the place, they're gonna have phones out, right? And so, well, it just makes me nervous about like, is that a reasonable expectation either? Or is it for the 45 minutes you're in the classroom, no phone out? If there's a phone out, we take it, it goes to the office. If you don't give the phone over, you go home. Like, I mean, I, you know, taking a phone away from a 16-year-old is not fun. It's not a fun business, right?
Initially, yeah, you can have them in your halls. And then you would be saying to kids politely that you didn't know, trying to do that. And then you chase the suit down, you're now ruining any chance of your relationship. It's a power struggle. You don't know them, they won't tell you their name. And they had a phone there, you know, the hall, it was tricky in the hallways. It was just like.
And I do kinda believe what Lisa said, like I don't, I don't think it's a long-term spike. I do think you, people are gonna find out if they're gonna follow through, right? And once they're followed through about either the phone goes there and your parents have to be the ones to come get it. The second time, you go home, have to have a parent meeting, whatever we'd set up. I mean, there'd be some that are, we're gonna test that and they're gonna see if we're gonna follow through and they're gonna see if all the campuses are gonna follow through in the same way and all the admin teams and the teachers, right? But if we do that and we do it consistently, I think we'll get good results. But again, we're in a subjective system because we're all people and people are all gonna respond to it differently. And, I mean, I can even imagine a scenario where we try to say, you know, all the class periods, nobody can use it. Well, we're gonna end up with a staff member somewhere that lets the kids get their phones out for that 40 minutes. And then how do we deal with that staff member, right? That's what we task our leaders to do and work with their staff. But you're gonna get some inconsistencies, but as much as we can, you know, I think as you guys are talking through these things, you're talking through the right stuff. I think we also wanna reserve the right to say, hey, we're gonna try it this way. And if not, then maybe we do have to go to something more, you know, extreme or a different approach to know that it's not the end of the road. Because we all wanna try to impact it, sorry.
I just don't think you can really expect a student to have their phone on them and have 54 notifications.
Yeah, exactly. And not be on it.
And not check. Hey, I don't.
I have a hard enough time making it through dinnertime and not checking to see if one of you guys have written me back, right? You know, and not staring at it, like let alone a 16-year-old kid, you know?
It goes back to the term cruel optimism that I brought up from Johann Hari's book where it's just like, we, we're expecting, we have this optimism that, yes, kids can do it, but even when we as adults can't do it.
Yeah.
And like we, there's the note from administrators working with their younger teachers having trouble keeping them off their phones.
Yeah.
And if that's, they're the closest link that we have to the current generation of our students.
Exactly.
And if we can't keep our teachers off their phones, notifications.
Well, and you're bringing up a secondary issue, right? A lot to work through. The policy for students is no phones from nine to four. And you have teachers and support staff pulling their phones out. It, it will soon create that, that conflict between students and teachers, or, yeah, students and teachers. And so we'll get some of that too as well. Again, a second, not secondary school issue, but a secondary to the policy discussion. But we know that that's going to be brought up either through this conversation or the students once we try to put something in place that doesn't address the adult behavior as well.
I do think our kids respond, you know, and I, I've heard more of this from our principals too. I'd say respond to the, here's why we're telling you to do this now, like better understanding about some of the mental health piece and some of the distraction. And I feel like we are starting to do better about talking to the kids about why rather than just saying, don't do it. And so there's some response there. And we know with a lot of our procedures routines, right? That's gonna work for about 80% of the kids. It's really then about, okay, then we're gonna need other tools to deal with, you know, 20% that doesn't get it through kind of tier one, right? You go to the old PBS triangle, tier one will take care of about 80%, and then what are we doing with the other 20%? So that's the other thing to think about. We're also thinking consequences for those that test the system, right? Or that, you know, maybe don't respond to the tier-one instruction or that. But that's also what can break our system down because then 20 goes to 30, goes to 40, and now you have a problem.
Students know you're talking about it and thinking about it. It's a highly interest topic for them, for sure, you know?
And I don't think we should sell them short on their knowledge of how bad the phones are. Jay, we've asked mock trial kids every year for the past three years. And universally, they say, I wish my mom and dad would've waited to give me social media until I was a senior. I got it in, and then that's where it changes, seventh grade, 10th grade, ninth. But they, they all say, every one of them say, I wish I would've waited. So I think they know, I think they all get it, that it's not good for them. But it's like, the example he gave in the book of his daughter being like, please take this away from me. Like I can't, I can't disengage myself, I need your help. Like, they are still kids and it's hard for them to.
I mean, do you want us to talk to the principals and see if, you know, we can get them around a, a sample policy that they think would be something they'd all be willing to try? And even if that idea results in something different than, I mean, what if that idea results in a yonder case or a cellphone locker and that's where they decide? My guess is I don't think that's where the whole group's gonna be. But is that option on the table, you know, or could we, can we bring you back a policy? Maybe there would be some, they would say, yes, we'd all like to try this consistently. That would be spelled out with expectations, then also potential consequences for.
So when you say principals, you mean all K through 12 or are you just talking about secondary?
In my head right now, I'm thinking more secondary. I mean, we have a consistent elementary one. I think, I think elementary would probably be, Eliza, correct me wrong, easier to work with to say, hey, if this is the policy you wanna do, they'll implement it too, right? And so I think secondary is probably a little bit harder to wrangle.
If you can get all of our secondary principals to agree. No, not don't mean that they're listening, that I, I don't have faith that they can. But I mean, I, I needed to say that if they all came to agree on something to present back to me as an individual board member, yeah, I'm gonna take that seriously.
There you go, Lucas. You got your marching orders.
That's two things, you say.
Yeah, two things, yeah. But I mean, seriously, I mean, is that something you guys, and then we can react to it or respond to it, right?
Yeah.
And we can, I think, share some of their thoughts and feelings back with you then instead of maybe having them here to talk through those. We can navigate some of that and share the why behind, hey, this is why they landed on what they did.
And I assume this, this third one is that they have full range of options available to them.
Yeah, I think that's what we would share with them. Hey, we're pretty serious about making sure that, you know, this, this issue is addressed and that we're protecting instructional time. You know, I think within reason, right? I mean, like, we're gonna have boundaries for them, you know, things that we wouldn't feel comfortable bringing you guys. But I, but I also think they have.
Well, not only are they expensive, but they said, we need, we need additional four staff members because we have four entrances. So we need four additional staff members standing at each door. That's probably one that we cannot get on board, but by, you know, about 24 additional staff members to check cellphones in and out, like, that's not something.
And we aren't just gonna be able to even turn around and approach them in this time period, right? I mean, if it's staff costs and supply costs and those things, so. So I think we'll try to help them with, you know, reasonable guardrails and, and I think they'll approach it reasonably too. They've been good about, yeah.
I'm just trying to stay engaged, it's been a long night, but. When you read the book, we should cancel the internet, right?
Just social media.
So, sure, right? Like, there's a lot to unpack in that book that has nothing to do with what we're talking about, quite honestly. It's just not. And so I go back to the question of what is the problem we're trying to solve, right? We had this, we have these policies of, sure, you can have your phone in passing periods or lunch or whatnot, and, but not in the classroom, right? The intent there is to solve the problem of kids being engaged in the classroom. So in my head, I was like, what is something that we can do to physically enforce that policy in words to still have that intent, right? To not do the total ban. But how do we make sure kids don't have their phone in the classroom? And I pictured like, you walk in a classroom, there's a thing hanging on the wall and everybody slips their phone right into the little slot for their spot. They go to their seat, they don't have their phone anymore. While they're in class, they get up, they grab their phone, they're on in passing time and they can have their phone. Because that's not the problem we're trying to solve, right? So I'm trying to come up with a way that is not something you even really have to enforce. You have to change behavior and say, here's the expectation. Now, you walk in the classroom, you drop your phone in the little slot. And I think reconditioning to have something more important going on in your brain than checking your phone all the time is what needs to happen for adults as well as kids, right? My phone buzzed in my pocket while I'm sitting up there at the board table. Could've been one of you texting me for all I know. I don't know, because I was engaged in the conversation we were having and I haven't checked my phone. I will tell you, when I'm at work and I'm bored, I'm probably checking my phone, right? Because like, there has to be something else that is engaging, right? And taking, and making it so it's okay to. and making it so it's okay to not need to worry about all of those notifications that are happening. But yes, to expect kids to have a phone on them in the moment and not do it is a big lift until you're able to start changing that narrative. And so I think you have to do something physical removal.
Well, and Sean, with that, like, back to your point about, like, success criteria, the problem we're trying to solve, I mean, we've kinda talked about that a few times, I'm not sure we've ever identified it, like, you, you know, part of the story in this article is about, like, what happens during lunchtime. And so are we just trying to solve instructional time? Do we care about passing time? Do we care about lunchtime? I mean, because those are different solutions we need to engineer then, too, right? Because if they don't have access during those times, then, yeah, I mean, you'll probably get some more stories like this, right, or you'll see some more solutions, but if we don't think that's reasonable or achievable, then, is the sole focus instructional time? Or are we looking for benefits beyond instructional time?
And I'll say, I'm looking for benefits beyond instructional time. What I found compelling about the Tamel article was the story about lunch, and that kids are talking to each other. I think their elementary through high school experience is an opportunity for them to interact with peers, learn how to have social norms, how to resolve conflict, right? I, I'm not sure if the book talks about it, but like, it's so easy to be mean to people online, and it's really hard to be mean to people in, in their face, and we're all old enough that we didn't grow up being mean to people online, but there's this whole, kids are losing that ability to talk to each other and resolve conflict in person. And so to me, get, that's why bell-to-bell, like, they do have to eat lunch with each other, and they should talk to each other during passing period, and they should have authentic conversations and not be staring at a phone. That, according to the research, doesn't give them any benefits. Like, there's just no benefits towards interacting with people on social media, and there's a lot of harm. So we're taking out a harm, and then we're, and we're changing that.
Yeah, I agree with that approach, actually. But again, to me, the only effective way to do that is that, is for kids not to have one on their person during school, during the time they're in school. Yeah. The city, I'm glad that schools have, are following that, considering, follows.
Not having them on their person, Charlie, yeah. I think that's part of, if we know the answer to that question, though, that's part of, again, what we can explore with the administrators is, okay, so if it's benefits beyond just instructional time that we're considered, or that we're considering, you know, in a policy-type way, then what's the practical way to try to implement something like that? And that's where we need them.
If that's not, if, if, you can't do that in a reasonable way, you can't, and I'm more than willing to work with administrators.
I think I might add, and I'm pretty sure that the board would probably be in favor of, is making sure that they're, and it's one that gets missed in the media or discussions, not called exceptions.
Yeah. Well, and we'll have to have some, like, dependent upon an IEP, 504, like, those we'll have to provide, right? So...
Just general health plans.
Yeah, health plans, I mean, any of that feedback you guys see, it'll come back in that parent-student survey, I think you can have confidence to know, we know we'll have to provide exceptions for that, so...
Just one nation.
Yeah.
Kids, listen to it.
Right. See what we can do.
Super easy.
Yeah.
Lucas has the easiest job.
Yeah, yeah, that's right, Lucas, it got, it got allocated to you.
When this needs to compile.
Next Tuesday. We'll add it to, we'll add it to ed committee.
I think, Lucas, seriously, I think that's a good question, like, when would we need to come back with this? And I'm thinking, like, really, you know, what I told you guys is we owe you a recommendation by October, so of course the next time we schedule this and talk about it, we'll try to provide you an update about where we're at in this process, but I think what we're really shooting for is being able to have something you could feel good about at the end of October, that we feel good about recommending to you as the, as the policy to move forward. And so, we're gonna work on it over a stretch of time, I'm not sure it's something we could turn around, of course, by the next meeting, but we'll start engaging the secondary folks with it.
I would like to couple the, the discussion with the admin, with the data from the students. I think all that stuff together helps make really good decisions, rather than just having data taken or they don't have the data, you have to decide and impact them.
So we'll kinda have to think about how we meet with them over a series of, a couple times, like you said, Lucas, so you can start the conversation, probably provide them some data point around the students and what the admin and teacher survey said, too, we didn't spend a lot of time on that today with them, so...
And the end of October timeline still has the potential for implementation, like, after winter break.
Yeah, I think that's, I mean, the idea of that timeline was, you know, to consider an after-winter break implementation.
But are we also willing to see any flexibility to that timeline, if needed? I mean, if we come back and it's just like, hey, we, we're just worlds apart with, especially our secondary buildings?
Like, if we need longer?
Yes.
Yeah, I think we, I mean, I think that we would just come talk to you guys and say, hey, maybe we're not gonna be ready by January, but, yeah.
That's expressed.
I think that's, that's the idea of what we'd like to move towards, but if for some reason we feel like that's just not gonna be possible, then, yeah, we can take longer, so...
I'm not sure, I'll give it to Lucas, that it's gonna be as difficult to get them on the same page of what an overall policy should be, as much as how are they going to be able to consistently implement it across the building?
Yeah.
That's where, I think that's where the challenge is going to be, is not necessarily them all coming together and saying, this is a great approach, but then how do they just make sure it's consistent? That, I think...
Well, and that's where they're at now.
Right.
You got some with hanging them on the doors, you know, with the sliders.
Well, even if it's just broad strokes of, do we want a bell-to-bell policy? Do we want a physical removal of the phone from people? Do we want them to have it on them and do it via, we see it, we take it, like, broad strokes? And then, like, that's where it's on us to have the support of, all right, you said you are okay with them having their phones on them, but you want a bell-to-bell that they can't have it in class, so that's gonna change how we're gonna enforce it.
Yeah.
But whatever it is, we stand behind it and we make it happen, but...
And I would just, I mean, I don't wanna speak for them without having them right here on the table or asking very pointed questions, but I think something we don't do very well is educating our students about the impacts of cellphones, so I think that's a must, that we don't take into account now, so I think the education piece needs to be something. I think also it helps them to fall back on something that's common across our entire system, so when parents are ticked off, teachers are ticked off, students are ticked off, this is something that we commonly agree upon will be the response and reaction for us as building administrators, that we then fall back on, it's like, we as a district all decide on this, this isn't just a West Side thing, it's being done differently with city and library, so I think those are all pieces to consider, as well as that piece, I'm just thinking, like, the pre-mentioned, the inter-mentioned, the post-mentioned piece, like, what are we doing throughout the entirety of the process to make sure our students are well-informed as well as our staff is supported, so...
Good stuff.
We gave the, we gave the job the right one.
Except they can also leave the board, right? Like, don't forget, don't forget about that.
All right, with that, I would give you the motion to adjourn.